Um, thank you for joining us today if you're watching at home. And happy Thursday. It's a little gloomy out, but my mom always said flowers need water too, so it's okay for rainy days. Um, let's go ahead and call this meeting to order at six thirty-three P M. And let's begin with our pledge of allegiance. So, school committee members and central office team, please join me in unmuting yourselves and uh sharing the pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which is our nation and our God.
Under God, indivisible, and all. This is from.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Go ahead and meet yourselves.
Do you do a roll call vote? Uh, roll call? So I'll know who's here?
Um, if it, if it helps, I can read off the names of the members who are here.
Yeah, cuz I, I don't know who's on, who's on board and who's not there. Okay.
Yep. So Ms. Enriquez is here. Ms. Velez, Ms. Hernandez, Mr. Jimenez. Ms. Santiago, yourself and myself. And we're only missing um, Mr. Wilson.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Alright, team, moving right along. So I have a motion to accept this school committee meeting, meeting minutes from our meeting on the eleven.
Make a motion. This is Lucia. Make a motion. Pass the minute.
This is Rebecca. Second emotion.
Motion passes. Moving right along to public comment section. Uh, Veronica or Mariana, do we have any public comments that were submitted?
There are no public comments submitted.
Awesome. Thank you. Moving right along. I will turn it over now to Dr. Urbeta.
Good evening, um, school committee chairwoman Garcia and members of the school committee. I would just like to provide a brief up, update on our remote learning two point O. Um, in our last meeting, we made the decision to, or you made the decision that we should be in remote learning for the fall, for the beginning of fall. And in light of that, we have been able to turn our attention to improve our remote learning two point O. We're calling it uh, remote learning two point O. And so I just wanna thank you for um, making that decision so that way we could move forward and really focus in on remote learning and improving the learning experience for our students and also improving professional development for our teachers and our, and our staff in general with remote learning. And we learned a lot about remote learning in the spring. We were, we, we kind of were thrust into remote learning. And there were so many takeaways and best practices that we did learn. And then when we moved into summer school, we also gleaned a lot and we had a very successful summer school with remote learning. So all of those best practices that we, we gathered, we, we can take those experiences and really grow from those experiences. And so we have put together a, a pack, uh, an improved plan for remote learning. And I'm going to ask Sarah Kent, our assistant superintendent, to speak to the improvements that we have made for remote learning. Um, Sarah, I'm gonna go ahead and stop sharing my screen so that way you can share your screen.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, thank you so much. Um, we, as Dr. Beta says, we have been working really hard to improve the experience and education for our Chelsea students um, for the fall. Um, we're going to run through and show you a lot of what we've been working on for the past few months and in very intensely for the fa, past few weeks, um, to give you an idea of what a kid's experience would be and how it would be different from what they experienced in the spring. So, our agenda is that we will uh, talk about what we learned from summer school. Adam's gonna talk about that. And then our plans for stronger, um, stronger remote learning, both the structure and accountability, as well as instruction and professional development. How are we going to be supporting special populations and partnering with our families? And then, of course, we'll have time for questions. So, just a reminder, um, we talked about this last uh, meeting, but what in our, in our experience, um, both through our surveys and our focus groups, what did our families and staff say about remote learning? Was that we needed to improve. And we all know that and we all recognize that. There were some wonderful things that happened last spring and there were some not-so-great things that happened last spring. And we are, we are committed to strategically improving it come the start of school this year. So Adam, can you walk us through what summer school?
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. Um, so in planning for summer school, we did experiment with the idea of trying to do some in-person learning. And ultimately, we decided to remain entirely remote over the summer. Um, and it turns out we got lucky with that decision because we got to learn a whole lot about remote learning and that's going to benefit us in the fall with our decision to remain remote. Um, we had a wonderful staff of teachers, site supervisors, and we had a district site supervisor as well, who really took it to heart and did a phenomenal job. They thought outside the box, they experimented. Um, and our su, site supervisors together had the idea, I can't take credit, of putting together a survey for their staff uh, so that we could learn as much as we can from them with the intention of all teachers benefiting and administrators benefiting uh, in the fall if we were to be remote. So it turns out that that um, information is gonna be quite valuable. So what we learned are sort of in five buckets. Um, so the first thing we learned is as we get better at remote teaching and remote learning, our actually, our student engagement improves. So ninety-seven percent of teachers did report that they are more confident with remote instruction because they taught summer school and had that experimentation time where they could try some new things. Uh, and coincidentally, seventy-seven percent of students participated across the district. Um, not seventy percent of the district students, but seventy percent of the kids who attend, uh, signed up for summer school had regular attendance, which was a big leap over the spring. We also did notice that we had, as kids got older, they had lower participation rates. So younger kids participate at a higher rate than older kids. However, there are some other factors that uh, contribute to getting older kids to participate at higher rates as well. Uh, one of those things is increased accountability. So um, the only course that was required, and if you didn't show up, you didn't get the credit, was the high school credit recovery for students who may have failed classes. And that program actually had an eighty-seven percent participation rate. So with the older kids not participating at the same rate as the younger kids, uh, the older kids taking credit recovery courses actually out-engaged or out-participated the younger students. Um, the other piece that um, we found, we had the calculus project, which as we talked about last time, you might remember it is a uh, pro, prob, program, sorry, uh, targeted for, for young students of color to get them on track to get to A P calculus. So it starts in seventh grade. Um, and that particular program is very challenging. Um, and we had an eighty-nine percent participation rate there. Um, another thing we learned is family communication strategies get better when we learn from each other. Okay, to have uh, the site supervisors all created spaces where teachers could share their strategies for how they are communicating with families and, and reaching out to families. So when we intentionally create those spaces to share best practices, uh, we're finding that uh, we're having much more success reaching out to families. And the last one, um, and this one seems like a no-brainer, but I don't know if we did a great job of it in the spring. And that is clearly communicating a uh, a specific schedule that goes out to families so they know that on this day and this time, on this link, you're going to be on Zoom doing a synchronous learning lesson. Slide please. Um, we also had some qualitative information. Um, and I'm not gonna read all of these quotes, but these are all coming from teachers who taught in the um, in the program and things that we learned from them and what really worked for them. Keeping times consistent every day. Um, increased conferencing, individual conferencing with students pays off really well. Um, thoughtfully considering the lessons and what are engaging, what's engaging for students. So really looking at your lesson and saying, what does this, what is this gonna look like on the other side of the computer for the student? And is this an engaging lesson? Is it worthwhile for the student? We have to get students excited, um, or they don't log on. Um, thinking about the, the slides that you're making, embedding links to support literacy development, all sorts of extra supports. And the technology really allows for some extra things that in-person learning doesn't actually have for us. Um, another teacher learned how to effectively manage and pace um, a live teaching session in Zoom. The pacing is different when you're teaching on Zoom as, as we're all getting better at it here at school committee. Um, the pacing is different. You need to allow for a little bit more wait time. Um, and some students are a little more hesitate, hesitant to participate, so you have to add that more wait time in there. Um, and the last one, I just really liked this comment cuz this is a teacher who refers to herself as an old dog. Um, but she felt that she became much more tech savvy. And she said, I thought this old dog could not learn any new tricks. Um, but she was really surprised and proud of her abilities. So it's good to know that even people who used to think they weren't good at this stuff, the idea is that they're, they're doing it and they do get better at it. Slide please.
Great.
And back to Sarah.
Um, so when, in analyzing how we did this spring and what were some of the barriers and what were some of the things we could improve upon, I'd like to just share with you what we've thought about and what we've worked on. And this, this falls into about twelve different buckets. Some of them are related to structure and accountability and some are related to instructional, instruction and professional development. So as we all have heard and seen in the media and not lots of articles, um, last spring we were in crisis teaching mode, right? And now for this school year, we've had time to do research, to try things out in summer school, to talk to other schools, read articles. Um, and so we're being much, much more strategic um, for remote learning this fall. So I'm just gonna go through some of the things that we're, we heard and we're reacting to. So, we heard loud and clear that Zoom meetings were hit or miss. You know, some teachers were having regular Zoom meetings with students, some were not. It was hit or miss. So as a result, um, for school this fall, there're gonna be daily schedules in place for all students and teachers. And as Adam just said, we saw that in summer school that really, really helped participation and um, learning. Also, we heard that attendance was sporadic. So we are going to be taking daily attendance um, by period at the middle school and high school, um, daily at the younger grades, and follow-up will occur. So one of the big, big differences in the plan and, and what we're trying to achieve is that students will work with their teachers every day. So there are many, many plans out there. I'm sure there's as many plans as there are districts. But one of the things that we've really valued and really tried to make important for Chelsea is that kids will see their teachers every day. Um, so we also heard that participation was low, um, and Adam just talked about some strategies to increase that. And we have also um, created uh, participation expectations for students. Grades, we didn't grade anybody with all good intentions, but sort of worked against us in some ways. And this, in the fall, grading will take place. And that those grades will be based upon both synchronous, meaning live, asynchronous, recorded, and independent work. So all of that will be put together into grades and kids will work towards their grades and earn them. Um, in the spring, not all stakeholders were engaged. We were in crisis mode. We were trying to do things the best we could, as fast as we could. And since then, as you know, because you've participated in a lot of this, um, there was a reopening task force with four subcommittees with different perspectives. And we did many focus groups with, with parents and students to get lots of perspectives on and learn how the experience was and to improve it. So, in the spring, some students did not acquire technology. We know that this is a linchpin to success in remote learning. Um, you have to have that technology in order to access the education and learn. So we will continue our work to ensure that all students have technology and Wi-Fi access. We're working on plans for distribution for new kids to the district or kids who didn't have that in the spring. Um, we're working about our grade one students and even our E L C kids, um, our kindergarteners will be receiving or available to have iPads um, for the spring. So we are working to make sure that all students K to twelve will have technology and Wi-Fi access. Uh, in the spring, the school buildings were closed. We were in a state of emergency and the buildings were closed. And this, in the fall, the buildings are open and functioning, although kids will be working, you know, learning remotely. And we are opening centers for online learning for middle and high school students. This is just simply opening the building in a, a safe, social distancing manner so that kids can come and do their work in the, in the school if they would like, um, you know, a quiet place to work um, with good Wi-Fi. And finally, we're also putting a plan in place to deepen our engagement and partnerships with families. We know that the more that we can partner with families and work together on remote learning, the more successful it will be. So there'll be more structure and opportunities for both support and collaboration. In the instruction and professional development realm, you know, in the spring, in crisis teaching mode, lessons were retrofitted to the new learning environment. Um, we were trying to take what we know and change it really fast to make it work. But this summer, we have done a ton of curriculum work that has proactively designed lessons and units for remote learning. Teacher teams have been meeting throughout the summer and vetting each other's work and collaborating around designing lessons and units that can be delivered in person or remotely. So they have, they can, they can go back and forth. Similarly, in the spring, in crisis mode, most lessons were basically focused on review materials and social emotional well-being, check-ins. Um, not so, starting, starting on the sixteenth. It's going to be standards-based, new content, integrating that S E L piece, um, using best practices for remote lessons. So, how are we gonna do that? Um, in the spring, teachers were learning on the fly. I mean, it's, most of us, at least I know, I had never been on a Zoom meeting prior to March thirteenth uh, last year. Now I spend most of my days on them and I'm getting pretty good at them. But we were learning on the fly. I mean, everything was new. Um, we see that in our own school committee meetings, the change that has happened. Um, but since then, we've had organized professional development. Um, but over the summer, there were a series of different options, as well as we are gonna continue to support teachers with professional development. I'll talk a little bit more about the details in a minute. Um, in the spring, we relied on free instructional platforms from tech companies. And I will say, they threw everything out there pretty free, which was really nice and great. But it also supported us in strategically choosing the best ones for the district to support remote instruction. So we tried a lot of things and then we got, we, we whittled it down and got down to the brass tacks of which ones are best and which ones support our, our remote instruction. Um, so those are including content platforms, like things that support math or science or things, interactive lesson platforms like this one, um, as well as digital tools for expression and collaboration. And then finally, the twelve thing, um, we were making quick, in-the-moment decisions on curriculum in the spring. Everything was moving fast. We were trying to do the best we could. But now we're being strategic. And we have revisited our year-long plans with an eye towards um, the spring having been a bit chaotic. So how are we gonna catch kids up? And we've also identified the essential understandings and skills so that we are really focusing, using our time well, on the essential stuff to plan for strategic instruction. So what does it look like, right? That's what everybody is really asking about. Um, it include, remote school isn't, is a mix of things. It's a mix of live lessons on Zoom or Google Meet with your teacher, some recorded things or, or programs that we use routinely in school, and independent work, right? So it's a combination of all of that. And actually, that's what happens in school regularly in brick and mortar. Teachers aren't talking the entire time in a school day. Um, they are monitoring and designing learning opportunities and activities for students. And it's like that, but it's a, it's at home through a screen. So it is a full day. Um, I've put some times here. I just want you to know this is still a work in progress. This is not set in stone. Soon you'll be getting um, some real, you know, real information from your child's school for exact details. But I, I know everybody wants to have an idea of what it would look like. So this is the way it would look. So for example, at the Berkowitz and Zuckelowski, the kids' day on remote learning would be from about eight thirty-five to one thirty-five. And they would also have some remote work to do as well. The middle schools, it would be afternoon or morning, um, one or the other, as well as remote work. Older kids can do more, you know, can stay focused on their own a little bit more. At the high school, they would have two seventy-five-minute periods and one forty-five-minute period, as well as independent work four days a week. And then on Wednesdays, they would have one forty-five-minute period with their teacher and they would have independent work. There's also time built into Wednesdays for things like small group intervention um, and support for kids that needed that, as well as um, family outreach time and collaboration time for teachers. And the Chelsea Opportunity Academy is keeping the schedule that it had last year. They already do a lot of things um, on the computer um, through their trackers. So again, this is just to give you an idea of the robustness of what a day would look like for a kid. Um, but please, you know, look for exact details from your school. And just a reminder, what I was talking about is how a lesson is actually a, a mixture of stuff, right? So um, it is a mixture of synchronous, meaning live things, that could be these kinds of, of um, activities, asynchronous, recorded, or independent practice work time, as well as possible sync, small group time um, and asynchronous work, including like things that are on paper, right? Kids don't have to do everything on the computer. There's no reason why they can't be doing some things by paper or doing presentations to their, with their peers and that kind of thing. So we do have some offline stuff. And then, of course, it also has to be rounded out with some independent work, right? And this is more than just what we call homework. These would be, read your chapter so that we can talk about it tomorrow, right? Like this is, you know, a more directed, structured, remote work. So just a sample schedule, um, as you can see, the different subject areas or what we call blocks are all included in there. Um, and it gives you an idea of what a kid might be doing. So they would have some specific time for S E L time or, or curriculum, math specialist, couple of different literacy blocks, reading to grow, read together, writing. And then they have some independent remote learning to do as well. Meanwhile, teachers on the other side are doing, teaching all that stuff, but also doing family outreach and collaborating, um, and having P L C, what we call professional learning. So the professional development, um, that I was talking about. So the commissioner, as you know, has granted ten days of collaboration and preparation time to launch the school year. So for us, that's from next Monday, August thirty-first through September fifteenth, with, because we have the long Labor Day weekend in there. Um, and so kids will start on the sixteenth. And we are, we have a whole array of activities planned. Um, and we will be partnering with a group called Better Lesson to provide some best practice sessions on remote learning. So all teachers and administrators um, will attend a session on remote learning topics to support this, this typical lesson, synchronous, asynchronous, feedback, that kind of thing. Um, and then we also, as part of the partnership, we will have access to a, a website of all kinds of resources, including videos and lesson plans and all kinds of things that will help teachers. Um, and they have a whole host of, they call it flexible learning resources, meaning it can be done remotely or in person. Um, and then in each teacher's schedule, there's P L C and collaboration time built in so that they can have ongoing support for this. And we're also in the process of hiring a digital learning coach uh, for the middle and high schools. We have two at the elementary and we have a lead at the E L C. Um, but we are rounding out that team with a fourth member. And then finally, we are creating a remote learning, an internal remote learning website for teachers, um, for educators, which will put all of these resources into one place. Um, so it will be easy for them to navigate and find whatever they need and be supported. So Adam is gonna talk a little bit about how we're gonna support our special populations in remote learning.
So this is certainly a hot topic, supporting our special populations. And, and this is certainly not an exhaustive list, but some of the concrete things that we are doing, particularly with our English language learners, um, is we're intentionally increasing the frequency of contact with those learners and their families, as well as the amount of communication um, that is available to them. We're certainly prior, across the board, we're prioritizing social emotional needs and finding ways to integrate um, social emotional learning into our lessons. But that is clearly um, at the top of the totem pole with our work with English language learners, as well as developing positive relationships. Um, and we've invested in a number of platforms that Sarah has referred to in the previous slides. Um, but I'll, I'll sort of call them up here. Um, so for, particularly for our English uh, learners, Imagine Learning in K to eight, and that is intend, um, intended to boost literacy overall. Um, I've worked with that program when I was a principal at the elementary level, and it is a phenomenal program. Um, and it, and it does wonders for English learners. We've been uh, invested in Padlet, which focuses particularly on speaking and listening, as well as Flipgrid. Both of those allow students to uh, really practice with their speaking particularly, which is one of our, um, one of our struggles with our English learners across the district. Also invested in Peer Deck, which provides interactive language lessons, as well as NearPod that does the same thing. Um, and lastly, uh, this is a phenomenal um, platform, Google Read and Write, um, which focuses on speaking and listening, but it's sort of embedded into all of your uh, documents as you're working. And you can click a sentence and have them read it to you. You can click a sentence and, or you can speak a sentence and have the type of, uh, it'll type it for you. So it does text to speech and speech to text. Slide. And as far as our special education students, the, the shift that we just found out, we were using what we called remote learning plans. Um, and now that title has now changed. Um, so you won't be hearing about R L Ps anymore. That acronym died pretty quickly. We're now going to be referring to those as, um, it's a little bit more of a mouthful, but COVID nineteen special education learning plans, or C S L Ps, if you will. Um, so those plans will include for parents, um, all of the staff info that you would need, including all the related service providers. If the student is receiving speech pathology or occupational therapy or physical therapy, and all that staff info will be there. Um, there will be strategies, assignments, and projects. The schedules will all be included in there, as well as other info on remote learning. And another piece that we think is going to be very helpful, cuz a lot of parents have been asking uh, with suggestions on how they can actually support their student at home as well. Um, and the other piece for supporting our special populations is that we really do encourage families who have questions to reach out to their special education liaison with any questions, concerns, thoughts, or ideas. Just call up that school and you can get your questions answered. We're really um, invested in making sure that people have the right information, um, and they can get their questions answered. And lastly, um, and certainly not least, partnering with our families in this time is so important. Our theory of action is that, um, particularly in remote learning, if we focus on partnering with families and developing those positive relationships, it's not only going to benefit us in, in, in remote learning, but it'll benefit us throughout. Throughout and even beyond this pandemic. Um, so what we're doing here is we're going to be providing professional development for educators. Um, and I'll I'll call out um Ayal Bergman, who is our um superintendent resident, who has been a great support for all the schools. Uh, in um working with schools to get that professional development going, to figure out. Uh, what is the latest research on what is most effective? Uh, we're, this is something really exciting, where we're working on trust visits, um, and we'll be doing that in September. Uh, and basically, so teachers and families will have opportunities to meet and conference together, get to know each other. Share their hopes and dreams and fears, um, and be able to just get the, start the year off, getting to know each other. And understand that we're all in this together, we're all trying to do our best. Um, we have family outreach time built into our educator's schedules, as Sarah pointed out. So every teacher will have the opportunity and the time built in in their schedule, which I know they're very grateful for. Because they all want to do this work anyway, so now it'll be built into their day. Um, so we know it'll get done. Um, and then there's a plan for supporting parents with remote learning, um, because not everyone is so good at it when you first start. As we know, old dogs can learn new tricks, but you know, you have to get in there and get some support. Um, and lastly, um, continuing to work to have every student having a device with Wi-Fi access. We will be, um, our plan is to have um another large-scale Chromebook distribution. On September, Friday, September eleventh. And Monday, September fourteenth. So information will be coming out soon on that. We do have enough devices for every student to have one. So if there is a student out there or a family out there who doesn't have a device, please look for that information and please come and get your device. Um, and we also have uh Wi-Fi access for those that are in need of that as well. And with that, we'll, we can open it up if anyone has any questions or comments.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Adam, Ms. Kent, and uh. Ida for sharing this awesome updated PowerPoint. I'd like to now open it up uh for questions and comments. I know Ms. Carlisle had a question, so Ms. Carlisle, take it away.
Thank you very much for all that information. Um, is there a phone number for parents to get in touch with the teachers? So they can work together on their children's, getting a proper education? Um, do we have some, I have a couple of questions. Do we have some way of keeping attendance to make sure the kids are are attending class on Zoom? And the parents, um, are having a problem with the Zoom too, and and they want to work with the teachers. To make sure they're getting the right education for their students, especially the non-speaking uh parents are having a problem helping their children with homework. And helping them get through the day on this uh Zoom classes they're on to. So Sarah, is there any way of us reaching out to these parents more? Get a phone number to them, so if they need to talk to the teachers, for the teachers to get in touch with parents, so they can speak to one another. Not on Zoom, uh, you know, on the phone, uh, I think it'll be better for them. And on the teachers, um, are they going into the schools for that ten-day prep time? Are the teachers going to be in in the schools in the classroom, so they're going to be taught the the prep time? For these, the ten days, the uh teachers are going to be trained? I think that's it for now.
Sarah and Adam, you guys go ahead and answer the first um questions, and then I'll answer the last one.
Okay. Um, so as far as reaching out to and connecting with teachers. I would just encourage each parent to call the school number, which is right on our website. Each each school has a page on our website, including um the phone number. And they can call the main office there and be connected with their teacher. Um, as the second question, I believe Rosemary was around supporting parents with using Zoom. And just in general, remote learning. We do have a plan and Ayal Bergman, as well as a team, a whole team, is working on creating more. Resources, including videos on how to use Zoom in multiple languages um for parents. Um, we also will be, when when we are handing out Chromebooks, um, we will be providing some written directions as well. Um, and kids will be getting, um, we're calling them clever badges because they come from clever. But these would even have like a Q R code that the kid would hold up to the camera and it would launch the, launch the work for them. So we are doing, we're trying really hard to provide much more support to parents. But this is also a way that parents could voice what they need and have more support in these trust visits. That they're going to be having in September with with teachers. And that's an amazing opportunity to say, hey, I need support with this, or I need help with that. And teachers can also show parents what what is out there to help them. Rosemary, does that answer your first two questions?
Yeah, and then on attendance?
Oh, sorry, yes, attendance. Attendance is going to be taken as usual in our um information system. Student information system, it which is called Aspen. And teachers will be recording who comes to class each period, not even each day, but each period. In the middle school and the high school. And so that that can be tracked, and when a kid is absent, it can be followed up on, right? Um, and then in the elementary and E L C, it would be daily attendance. That's easier because it's one teacher. When it's, when it's rotating teachers, we want to take it each period. Because if a kid didn't come, the teacher wouldn't notice. But in the elementary schools, when it's one teacher, if the kid's not there, the teacher knows that, you know.
Do you have some kind of a count of how many students are on each Zoom class?
Yes. So at the bottom of each Zoom there, you you can actually drag your cursor down and you can see number of participants. You can also click that button and then a list of who is in the Zoom will show up on the right-hand side of the screen. Um, so you can see the faces, but you can also see the list of names as well.
All right, um, and what about the teachers? Are they going for the ten-day training? Will they be in the schools? Visual, uh physically in the schools, are they going to be Zoomed?
Um, Rosemary, I can answer that for you, so. We have negotiated with our teachers' union for it to be optional, so they can come in. Or they can um work from home and do the training from home. All the training will be on a remote platform, so that way there's, teachers can have access um remotely.
Okay, thank you, Superintendent.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Carlisle, for your questions. Um, are there any school committee members with questions or comments? If you can just wave to me.
I have one.
Go ahead.
Hi, everybody. Um, I just want to thank for all the hard work I know is going into this. New plan. I know it's not easy and I appreciate everything that you guys do. Um, I just had a question on those trust visits. Are they going to be in person or is it going to be a scheduled Zoom?
Those trust visits will be, um, they can be either remote or they can be in person. Uh, it depends on if the teacher, what, again, that's part of the option, the ten days that we have. Worked with our Chelsea Teachers Union, so the teachers have the option of um meeting at the schools. If they're at the schools, we are recommending that they have the trust visits outside. Um, with the families and we're providing tents and we're going to put tents up, so that way they can meet with families. Um, the visits will be, as as um Adam said, hopes and fears for your, and dreams for your children. It's really an opportunity for the teacher to get to know the family and the student. Then the first interaction with the family will be a positive one. Tell us a little bit about your student and what are your dreams for your child? So we believe our theory of action is if we build those relationships upfront, and then we will have improved remote learning. And so that is our goal. And then at the end of those visits, whether it's virtual or Zoom, we're going to do inventory. Do you have a Chromebook? Do you have a Wi-Fi? Do you know how to use it? And then we'll have, um, we'll be taking notes on those to make sure that we get um students connected to a Chromebook. Because we know that every student that has a Chromebook, that means that we're going to have students learning. So we're really working on that family and community engagement piece we're up front. Because we believe that that's going to be um the success to lead to the success of our remote learning.
And I'm sorry, Ms. Garcia, I said I have one question, but I actually have two more. Um, I just wanted to ask on the summer school, like, how many students? Um, did we have across the district um that signed up for summer school? And were the teachers at any time in the buildings or was everything done um remotely?
I'm going to defer that one to um Mr. Delaney.
Yep, we had right around a thousand students and everything was done remotely, so teachers were not in the buildings.
Okay, thank you. And you guys are lucky. My third question went away. If I get it back, I'll ask.
Alrighty, thank you, Ms. Velez. Mr. Wilson, did you still have a question? I saw your hand. Alright, we'll get him back. Um, Ms. Hernandez. I think you're muted, Mrs.
Hi, everyone. Um, thank you so much um for the presentation and um for all the wonderful information. I wanted to ask, um, is there any way of us of being able to get a copy of this presentation that we saw today? Email to me or to whoever wants it?
Absolutely. We will send it to the entire school committee.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I'm so happy to hear that um there is so much focus happening with the parent communication. And the relationship with the parents that makes me extremely happy and relieved. Um, because this is something that was of extreme concern to me and to most of my colleagues, I believe. Um, so I'm so happy to see that so much concentration is being given to that. So thank you so much for continuing your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good, Ms. Enriquez. Mr. Wilson?
Yes, uh, just want to ask a question if somebody can clarify this. Couple of uh my parents are asking me about the uh kindergarten kids. Uh, if they're starting school on the sixteenth or are they starting school on the twenty-third? Looking at the information that we we see a couple of weeks ago, it shows everyone started on the sixteenth. But I guess when they called the superintendent's office, they was told uh twice by two different people. That the pre-kindergartens are starting on the twenty-third. Is there any clarification there that someone can share with us tonight?
Um, Mr. Wilson, kindergarten will start a week later as we have historically done. I will make sure we communicate that out and we put that clearly on our um front page of the website, so families.
And the kindergartens will be remote as well, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, Doctor.
Mm-hmm, you're welcome.
Mr. Wilson, are there any of.
Yeah, woman.
Who uh have a question or comment?
Yes, hi, Ms. Garcia, this is Marisol.
Go ahead, Ms. Santiago.
Hi, um, this question is for Adam, just because, you know, I know that you were focusing on on this information here with us tonight. You referenced, um, just wanted to ask if we were going to talk about it later. Um, when we talk about special populations. Um, I know that we were looking over very quickly, like reviewing all of that and just echoing what others have said. Really grateful that all of you came back and really um showed us a lot of details about what a typical day for the students will look like, which is really helpful. Um, and appreciated. So I I like, I would love to have a copy of that, even though I I heard that it's, you know, some of that stuff is still changing and being fine soon. Uh, but it's a great reference to have for for questions. Uh, but I I in particular, um, Adam, when you talked about E L L students, um, which is really nice to to see you talk about like the different platforms for support. Like, for example, my daughter, Jomi, she's um on an I E P, receives special education through Berkowitz. We had like Class Dojo, Class, um, Class Dojo. Um, and all these other like uh ways of communicating with the teacher. Aside from like the actual Chromebook where we'd go into the classroom and like she would get her materials. So I really appreciated seeing that there's a lot of thought about that. I'm still practicing with the Class Dojo and stuff and getting a little better. Um, and also echoing my appreciation that, you know, all of you are really thinking about how to support the parents. To really feel comfortable about using the technology, um, and making yourselves available for that. So having said all that, um, has there been, do you foresee like the programming for students with I E Ps? And I know that might vary based on school, um, but have you gotten a sense of like? Um, other students that receive uh services from the high, um, from the district. Like the North Shore Collaborative and other students that might have um other needs that might be a little bit different than um. Than this particular programming is, how are we doing there, I guess, for for those students?
Yeah, so, um, you know, there are a lot of things that are in place for our special education students. And there is, you know, we have a full continuum of services, um, everything from just um like a consult on a speech and language. Or all the way to a residential placement. Um, and so there there is. You, you, your question is a great one, but it's also, it also requires a good ninety minutes of a response. Um, but so the things that we listed on that slide are the things that we have newly invested in for this coming year. And as, you know, you mentioned Class Dojo, that's not on that list, um, but I I s- schools will continue to use that if they've been using it. So these are, these are sort of uh newer things that we've either invested in in a new way or invested in a more advanced um version of. Um, but all of the things that we've been able to do, um, will will continue to do. Um, and then as we're looking at each individual kid, we're trying to be as creative as possible to meet the needs. I will say the thing we do struggle with, Ms. Santiago, is um there is no way to replace in-person learning. Um, and it is, it's something that I really struggle with, um, because I do know that I I I. As hard as we try, I don't think it's possible to fully meet um our special education students' needs. Um, as as I'm guessing, you probably agree with um being home with your daughter, right? Yeah, thumbs up, exactly. Um, but we'll, we are going to do the best that we can. And our special education teachers are dedicated to thinking outside the box and trying everything that we can to do. Um, to meet those needs through a screen.
Thank you, Adam. And I and I really appreciate the trust visits. I think that whole idea of just welcoming the student and starting one-on-one and getting a better understanding is just really gonna make us more prepared. To meet those students wherever they are and do the best that we can. Um, but agreed. Thank you. Thank you, Adam.
Thank you, Ms. Santiago. Uh, I apologize, Ms. Hernandez. I called you, Ms. Enriquez. My apologies. Um, and then I also noticed Mister Counselor Leo Robinson is with us today. And so if you, uh, Leo, have any questions, you're more than welcome to to bring him to the table as well. Um, so, yeah. Um, if there are any other members that have questions or comments, go ahead and jump right in. I do have three questions myself, but I'd like to hear from my committee members beforehand.
I have another question.
Oh, go ahead, Ms. Carlisle.
Thank you very much. Um, I guess this would be for the superintendent. Superintendent, um, there are other people, uh, jobs related to this uh coronavirus. What is happening with the pares and the crossing guards? Uh, because I know a couple of people had asked me what happens with their jobs. Are they going to be working? What's going to be happening with them? Is there any way you're telling me what's going to happen with the crossing guards and the pares?
Sure, um, I can speak to the pares. Our par professionals will be supporting learning in the classroom like they normally do. So when we're the the, as you heard from Sarah, Sarah, the students, when they're in small groups, the pares. Will be taking small groups and working with them online, just like they would in the normal classroom. And so they will be supporting virtually like they do in the normal classroom. Um, I'm going to have Monica Lombardi speak more about our operational staff, like our crossing guards. I know, uh, we, they're going to be helping out with meal distribution, but I would love for uh Monica Lombardi to share a little bit more. About our thinking around our operational staff as well.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Abesa. Um, specifically in terms of the question, as mentioned. Um, we have offered our crossing guards an opportunity to work at the meals programs. Where we are going to continue to have outdoor um tables set up for meals. And there are space for approximately twenty-five of the guards to work there. Um, some are starting on Monday to help us on August thirty-first with the five-day boxes that we're giving out. So we've got about fifteen have have agreed to work those. have have agreed to work those days. So um they only get paid if they work. So we are trying to come up with opportunities for them to help us. And there is certainly quite a bit of work that um they can help us to do. Right now, the the meals program is the first thing top of mind.
Thank you.
Great. Alrighty, so um I would like to quickly share a positive story. So my nephew um, his name is Achilles and he is the son of Counselor Melinda Vega here in Chelsea. And he has autism and we were very nervous about how school closure would impact him. And then Ms. B, shout out to Ms. B, hope you're on the call. She came home and delivered a beautiful backpack with his iPad, the charger, and all of these cool gadgets. And um and a week later, he's party trained all by himself because of the Elmo app on the Chromebook. And so I just wanted to share this story of, you know, our little Achilles learning all by himself on the iPad. Um, and so I just wanted to take a moment to just thank the team for creating such beautiful packets and um such a fun backpack. It was so fun to see his face light up with the Play-Doh and all of these things. Um, so thank you, Ms. B, and thank you to the Early Learning Center. Um, okay, so now I have three quick questions. Um, first question is grading policy. So will we be using the same grading policy as we were prior to school closure? Or will it look a little differently in the virtual world? Like, will there be a grading floor? Um, yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna defer that one to Sarah cuz she's been working on on that component. So, um, Sarah?
Jordan. Um, so the grading policies will, of course, the sort of the components of what goes into a grade has changed slightly. But that is um in teachers' discretion to create grades. Though I think what you may be just thinking of, um Chairwoman, is the grading floor at the high school. So we had a grading floor in place for grade nine at the high school. And we were about to expand it into other grade levels this year. We have decided to pump the brakes on that a little bit and um not try. We're doing so many new things as it is. We're trying to reduce the newness of uh newness. So we will continue it in grade nine, but we will not be expanding the grading floor in grades ten, eleven, and twelve this year. It is something we hope to do in the future when there's a bit more bandwidth and and there's there's more um opportunity for experimentation. We're trying to keep as much things the same as we can for for everyone.
Alright, thank you. My next question is, I know some students um who have an IP have an accommodation of um having a physical copy of a textbook or a chapter. Um, and I'm wondering how will we support students that learn better with a physical copy of their English book or their history textbook? Um, yeah, like, could we possibly add books to their, to the Chromebook Distribution Day for students that would like to have a physical copy instead of an electronic copy?
That's a really good question, Chairwoman Cal Garcia. I know our teaching and learning staff has thought deeply about it. They're creating, I'll let Sarah speak to it, um some some bags and some material thing, materials for students to take home, just like we are with our athletics. Um, because we realize that our kids are sitting and doing remote learning. So, um, Sarah, you can go ahead and share some specifics some of what we're letting the kids take home.
Even though we are in remote learning and we will be providing education through screens, we do truly value other methods, right? Um, and nothing is, I I personally love a good book and have a really hard time reading one on a screen myself. Um, so.
We do.
Yeah, um, so there's something about the smell and the taste, I, you know, the smell and the feel, I don't know. But um, anyway, people, the different schools are creating bags of things for kids. Um, and to be honest, they're working hard to create bags of materials that kids would need at home in order to be successful. And I am a hundred percent sure that if a kid needs a true book in their bag, they can have that. Like, I am saying to schools that we should think about this as not a bag for the whole year, right? Like, there's, you know, this is, we can do this on a routine basis and just ask parents to stop by and pick something up outside or whatever. Um, but we are, we are working hard to think about what are the tangible things that kids need to be successful. So as Dr. Abeda mentioned, you know, the phys ed department is working hard to get kits of phys ed stuff. And, you know, there might be math manipulatives or books, as you say. The librarians are very interested in still having a book rotation happen. Um, you know, so we're trying, we're being creative and trying to think of ways that we can safely do this, right, in in this health pandemic.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question is more so about the future and planning for the future. And so how will our high school students be supported in their college and career preparation, right? You know, what what does that look like in the virtual world?
So to answer that question, our s- our students will still continue to have all the services available to them. We're still doing early college, which we know is incredible. Um, that prepares our students to be successful in college. And there's been some recent studies uh by Mass Insight sharing that students who engaged in early college were actually more successful in college. So we still have all of that partnership. Everything's still going full speed. Uh, we have our our guidance support, our school support, our school counselors, all intact. Our social workers, all intact. So just as we are, we are having our school committee meeting virtually, um, services will be provided virtually as well. And so this is, everything is transferring over. Um, and and we're still working on building more partnerships, um even as we are virtual. Uh, looking at ways that we can expand partnerships with universities and partnerships with other um college and career um nonprofits that focus on preparing students for college or career.
Awesome, thank you. That's it for me, Ms. Velez. Do you still have a question you would like to ask?
Yes, um, so my question was, how many students will be with the teachers on Zoom? Will be like a regular classroom if we were physically together?
So, um, Ms. Velez, that is a complicated question because of the structures that we are putting in place. So we are, even though we we are starting in remote learning with the hopes that someday um this this year that we'll be able to go into in-person learning. So that said, we're actually having to prepare and plan for in-person learning right now and group students according to according to that and the choices that parents have chosen. So if a parent has chosen the hybrid learning model for the future, then students are being grouped in that, in those cohorts. If a parent has chosen what we're calling Ola, which is our online learning academy, then they're being grouped with those students. And specifics as far as class sizes, uh I'm gonna let uh Sarah can't talk a little bit more about that. Um, but it, they do vary. Uh, and that's why we we we're still, we wanna prepare now so that way, and group kids now and teachers now, so that way when it's time to switch into in-person learning, whenever that happens, our students and teachers stay with each other and that it's seamless. And so we're having to do all that work upfront now. It is a lot of work. But we figure, let's do the work now, build, and that way we don't disrupt us. It's all about the children and it's all about what's doing right for our students. But if we do the work now, we don't have to worry about it later. So and and we have a, we're we're continuous with our students and we're not, we're not disrupting their instructions. I'm gonna let Sarah explain the actual class size amounts and and the why it is being structured the way it is.
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Abeda. So as as she said, we are actually sort of completely planning two different models at the same time as far as structuring classes. So as you know, families have been choosing how their students will receive their learning down the road. We're all starting remotely, we know that. But as uh Dr. Abeda was explaining, we need to set them up so that when and if the health conditions are such that we can come back to school, we can do that. And we wanna make sure that kids wouldn't be changing teachers or switching cohorts. And then it's all set up for them now, so that if and when we come back, we're just changing where they're learning, not who they're learning with. Um, as you can imagine, if you're a second grader and you start the year, um, you know, with Mrs. Martinez, you don't want to, when we come back to hybrid in, you know, whenever that is, to have to switch, you know, to Senor Lopez, right? So you want to be um as consistent for kids. There's gonna be so much going on that we want those relationships to really be strong and get to know those kids and give them the best education possible. So, that said, in the hybrid, as you can, as you know, we have committed to six feet of distancing in the classroom. Which right now doesn't matter because we're all remote, but it does matter if we come back to the school building. Therefore, our hybrid classes need to be a size that can be accommodated in our classrooms. So in most cases, that is fifteen. And in some cases, that's fourteen, literally based on square footage and distance between people. So our hybrid classes are going to be pretty small, so that when they come back, they can be socially distanced. Now, our Ola classes, which are the classes that the te- that people are opting into being fully remote and not necessarily coming back to the building when the health conditions say, but when they want to, then those classes are going to be larger. I don't have an exact number for you. Um, but as you can imagine, if the hybrid classes are smaller, they're going to have to be larger um in order to accommodate all the students. Is that, I mean, I'm not saying they're gonna be forty. They're not gonna be, you know, ridiculously large, but they will not be fifteen um because of the um because of just sheer numbers of students to teacher ratio.
Thank you guys for that explanation and it's great you guys are thinking ahead of um and just being prepared. So, um, thanks.
Yeah, Ms. Garcia, this is Marisol. I know we have other items on the agenda, so I wanna be mindful. It's just a quick follow-up on this, if that's possible. That's all I have.
Yep, go ahead, Ms. Santiago.
Um, thank you. So Sarah, the, thank you again. I I I really appreciate, I know it's like a tremendous work on both sides for two models. Um, and and like Junie said, really appreciative that you are all really being so thoughtful in all these details. Um, I particularly, as an example, I chose Ola for my daughter. Um, just just keeping in line with uh my little peanut Jomi here, um as an example, uh you know, I wanted to ask that what does it mean for parents that like for for me, where I'm saying right now I want Jomi to stay in Ola? Um, the ideal situation, given what you just explained, would be, let's say that for students that have chose a hybrid model and where we chose Ola, let's say in February, March, folks start to phase back into the schools. Um, would the option for Jomi or other students that chose Ola, would the expectation be that they remain online for the full school year? Or would that be sort of like a period, a waiting period, or some sort of, you know, list as to how you would phase all students back in? Or was that ultimately something that you're like saying, okay, you chose Ola, that that is it for the school year? Um, given where you guys are at?
Um, we, uh, Marisol, we can answer that question. The, what we've talked about in the past is that you know, parents may decide they wanna change their minds down the road. And so we would look for a natural break in the school calendar and see and and analyze classrooms and see what what we could do. Um, we're not, I mean, we would prefer that we don't have a lot of transfer over because of the class size and uh what we negotiated with our union, what we we tend to negotiate and but at the same time, we wanna be flexible to our families because things change, right? And situations at home change often. Or it could be that a parent feels more comfortable now that it's, maybe the virus has um we have less positivity rates in in the city and a parent's like, you know, I I I wanna try this now. And so we have to be flexible. So we would look for natural breaks in the calendars and and consider that and analyze that child by child, school by school.
Thank you. That was a question that came up in the last couple of weeks and, you know, I I I keep reiterating that we were in the process of you know, fine tuning a lot of things and I didn't wanna give like the wrong answer. Um, but appreciating the effort to, you know, the whole concept of like having these two models, right, and making them work for all the students in both. So just being mindful about it. I think it was really helpful for families to hear, you know, and for us to just have clarification. And thank you for um being flexible around that if needed, yeah.
Sure. And we will get you, I will send you the PowerPoint um later on tonight. And we'll get, so that way everybody has this PowerPoint because I know there are a lot of questions out there and that's why we felt it was important that we go through this in a bit more detail now that we know what we're doing. And I I just thank you for that opportunity.
Dr. Abeda and Ms. Santiago for your question. Just like to take a moment to thank the central office team for working day in and day out on these plans. Your work um does not go unseen, so I just wanted to take a moment to send you a virtual hug. You have worked so, so hard. So we just thank you. Our families are so appreciative. Our teachers are appreciative. Our students are so grateful to have a team that supports every single one of them on their side. Um, and with that, let's get back right on to the agenda. I believe we are um in the new business section, given that we don't have any reports to share just yet. Thank you, Dr. Abeda.
You're welcome, honey. Get there. I apologize for going through all the enclosures here.
That's okay. That's just shows how much work is put into these meetings, right?
I know, it's a lot. Okay.
Do you, sorry, do you mind pulling pulling up the?
Agenda?
Yeah. Alrighty, team. First uh item under new business is consideration and action to accept a gift of twenty American Girl dolls from Dr. Jerry Robinson at an estimated value of two thousand two hundred dollars. Explanation: Dr. Jerry Robinson, former president of the Children's Museum of Boston and current member of the School Committee of Boston Public Schools, has generously donated twenty American Girl dolls to the Chelsea Public Schools at an estimated value of, I think that's supposed to be two thousand two hundred. Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Seventy-One, Section Thirty-seven A, provides for the acceptance of gifts only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Ms. Seas, may we have a roll call, please?
Pardon, Ms. Garcia, may I ask a question before we go to a roll call?
Absolutely, go ahead.
What, what, it's so interesting and kind to hear that we have a donation of of American dolls. I was just wondering where are they going towards our our schools, like um the purpose for these dolls? Uh, it'd be nice to see an image. It doesn't need to happen right now, but I'm just really interested and and it sounds like a sweet gift. Um, but just just curious if anybody has any information about the dolls.
I can provide some information. They they did donate the American Girl dolls. They're going to middle go- middle school um dolls. And they are of different race and and diversities. And with the Girl Dolls comes the book. Um, and so the the books are all, it's all about diversity. And so this is going, it with literacy, it's about um teaching about diversity. teaching about diversity, because as you know, each Girl Doll comes from different parts and has a different history. So that it's just some, it's gonna be a literacy lesson with a doll for middle grades, I believe it's grade five. I can get you a specific more information as well.
That was really helpful to hear a little more background about it and, and its purpose, that's really sweet, thank you, um.
Ms. Boykin, before the roll call, can you clarify whether it's a thousand two hundred or two thousand two hundred dollars?
You had a correct, it's two thousand two hundred.
Okay, okay, great. Alrighty, Ms. Sejas, we're ready for a roll call.
Consideration and action to accept a gift of twenty American Girl dolls from Dr. Jerry Robinson at an estimated value of two thousand two hundred dollars. Ms. Carlo?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yeah.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Eight votes in the affirmative with one absent and motion carries. Eight in affirmative, motion carries. Consideration and action to accept a gift from Catalyst Ed to provide eighteen professional development sessions for four hundred and fifty teachers at an estimated, sorry, last word. At an estimated value of eighteen thousand dollars. Explanation: Catalyst Ed is a Bible One C three organization that matches school systems with donors to fulfill projects providing expertise and education. They will be providing CPS with eighteen professional development sessions, through better lesson, available to all district teachers and to access to it, and to access to a bank of resources for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year at no cost to the district. Their total donation is valued at eighteen thousand dollars. Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Seventy-One, Section Thirty-Seven Eight, provides for the acceptance of gifts only with approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Ms. Sejas, may we have a roll call, please? Consideration and action to accept a gift from Catalyst Ed to provide eighteen professional development sessions for four hundred and fifty teachers at an estimated value of eighteen thousand dollars. Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlo?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yeah.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Nine votes in the affirmative, the motion carries. Nine in the affirmative, the motion carries. Next, we have consideration and action to accept a gift of two hundred and fifty dollars from Beth Israel Deaconess Middle Medical Center for the purchase of home physical education equipment. Explanation: Beth Israel Deaconess Medical Center has generously donated two hundred and fifty dollars to Chelsea Public Schools for the purchase of home physical education equipment. Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Seventy-One, Thirty-Seven Eight, provides for the acceptance of gifts with approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Ms. Sejas, may we have a roll call? Consideration and action to accept a gift of two hundred and fifty dollars from Beth Israel Deaconess Medical Center for the purchase of home physical education equipment. Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlo?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yeah.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Nine votes in the affirmative, the motion carries. Nine in the affir- the motion carries. Next, we have consideration and action to accept a gift of ten thousand dollars from Tango Therapeutics towards the back-to-school celebration. Explanation: Tango Therapeutics is a biotechnology firm located in Cambridge, Massachusetts, with a mission to develop medicines that direct aim at specific tumors. During the pandemic, the firm has been donating funds to address food insecurity in the region. Recently, Health Chelsea mentioned to them CPS's efforts to provide school supplies to students in advance of the school year. And they have generously donated ten thousand dollars in support of the district's back-to-school celebration. Uh, Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Seventy-One, Section Thirty-Seven Eight, provides for the acceptance of this only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Ms. Sejas, may we have a roll call, please? Consideration and action to accept a gift of ten thousand dollars from Tango Therapeutics towards the back-to-school celebration. Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlo?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yeah.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Nine votes in the affirmative, the motion carries. Nine in the affirmative, the motion carries. The next item on the agenda is a resolution to declare that Black Lives Matter. Before opening it up, roll call, I'd like to read the resolution and then open it up for a discussion uh, to see if there are any comments or questions from the school committee.
Um, yeah, I don't know if you see my uh, suggestion to add some words to the resolution. Um, because I don't have the copy here with me, but uh, we gave it to, okay, but I requested to have changed.
Yes. Yes, I did, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you.
Yep. Alrighty. So, Chelsea Public Schools Resolution to Declare that Black Lives Matter. Introduction: Throughout our nation's history, institutional and structural racism and injustice have led to deepening racial disparities across all sectors of society and have had lasting negative consequences for our communities, cities, and nation. The continued and unnecessary loss of Black lives, such as Joy George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, Ahmaud Arbery, and so many others, calls upon us to be visible in our outrage and more importantly, in our resolve to work for change. Chelsea Public Schools are facilitators of the limitless growth potential of all people, with a charge to instill in our youth a belief that every person deserves to live with dignity, be valued for their inherent humanity, and be treated ethically. Whereas, it is essential to recognize the experiences, honor the history, and highlight the contributions of Black and Brown people, while ensuring that every Black and Brown person has a social, economic, and political power to thrive. And whereas, police use of excessive and militarized force, particularly against Black and Brown community members, are among the most serious ongoing human rights and civil liberties violations in the United States and have led to a decrease in public safety and the exacerbation of structural inequities. And whereas, we recognize that discrimination, bias, and racist incidents against Black, Brown, and Indigenous students harm them mentally, physically, and academically. And whereas, stating that Black Lives Matters does not negate our commitment to all members of our community, but rather elevates Black and Brown people who have historically been oppressed by our society and, and affirming that their lives specifically matter. And whereas, these efforts are aligned with our equity policy and the recognition that valuing the diversity that exists among our students, staff, families, and community members is integral to our vision of preparing today's students to be thinkers, leaders, and creators of tomorrow. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Chelsea Public Committee stands firmly against bigotry, prejudice, discrimination, and equity in all forms, both institutional and individual. And declares that Black Lives Matter and joins the movement to fight for freedom, liberation, justice, and democracy. And as protests surge in our local community and beyond, the Chelsea School Committee wishes to affirm its commitment to the well-being and safety of Black and Brown community members and let them know they are not alone. One, the Chelsea School Committee denounces discrimination, racism, and sentiments against Black and Brown people. We will not tolerate racist treatment of any members of our community and we will speak out against racism and systemic oppression in our society to help stop the spread of bigotry. Two, the Chelsea School Committee joins cities, counties, and states across the country in affirming its commitment to the safety and well-being of our Black and Brown community and in combating he- hate crimes and biases in our government systems. Three, the Chelsea School Committee will increase its efforts to provide a safe and welcoming school environment for all students, working with the City of Chelsea, community nonprofits, and other government agencies. And four, the Chelsea School Committee will confront the biases in our own school districts and actively engage in the challenging work of dismantling problematic practices that are limiting opportunities for our Black, Brown, and Indigenous students. Be it further resolved that the Chelsea Public School System is committed to restorative justice practices, implicit bias training, ethnic studies course offerings, and resources that foster dialogue around the guiding principles of Black Lives Matter. Finally, be it resolved that the Chelsea Public Schools seeks to work tirelessly and collaboratively with staff, students, and families to dismantle institutionalized racism in our society. Witness, where we, the members of the Chelsea School Committee, have here on to set our hands this twenty-second day of August, twenty twenty. And so I'd like to open it up for a debate. Uh, if you would like to speak, if you can just wave your hand at the camera, um, and I will call on you. Mr. Jimenez, go ahead.
Um, I just wanna say, I'm glad that this topic is being brought up again to the committee and I um, just wanna bring up that since the last time we spoke about this issue, the city council has declared racism to be a public health crisis in the city of Chelsea and that thanks to the efforts of leaders from the Chelsea Youth Adult Alliance, there's now a concrete set of measures that Black youth from our community are asking us to take. Um, now, I don't think that these have been shared with the school committee yet, um, but they were sent to the city manager since not all of them are education-focused. And the organization's leaders are meeting with, uh, soon with Dr. Abada um, to talk about their education-specific recommendations. Since we haven't seen these, I'm clearly not calling for us to support them blindly. Um, but given the work that this resolution is calling us to do, I wonder if it might be proper to amend the resolution to include a commitment to engaging with these recommendations as a school committee, perhaps through a special subcommittee of the whole or at our next meeting. Um, I would just like to see us add to our next agenda or, or to an additional meeting, a presentation of these requests so that we can engage with the youth leaders about these issues and how we could approach them as a school committee. Um, so that said, I'm curious if people would support an amendment to include some language around that commitment um, and, and to essentially like a commitment to engaging fully with the community-led proposals that have been brought forth by this organization.
Thank you, Mr. Jimenez. Is there a, um, a second?
No, I, I, I'm not, I'm not making a motion yet, I'm kinda just curious if people would be open to the idea, I'm not, you know, if, if, if there is an, you know, an interest, I, we can make a motion, um, I'm just kinda curious if people might be interested in adding that, you know, as, I know, I know that this, this um, resolution has been passed in other cities, um, but this would be a nice way to like make it a little more Chelsea-like, specific and add, add some specific commitments to our community.
Great. Um, are there any other members that would like to speak or respond to Mr. Jimenez's comment?
This is Marisol, if I could speak.
Go ahead, Ms. Santiago.
Yeah, I, I actually agree, um, but am also in this, of the mindset that I wanted to hear more feedback from others and, and what their thoughts were. Um, I think specifically that, you know, I shared at the last meeting that I, I had a heartache about the school committee not supporting the first resolution that was initially proposed. Um, during the time where we had students, teachers, and our community coming to speak to us about this, where I think there was an opportunity to take, um, you know, clear action and, and, and be unequivocal with our support and, and, and a united front as a city. Um, you know, the city council had already passed their resolution, as I stated. Um, and then the city declared racism a public health crisis with various steps for, for different parts, different departments of the city to sort of take an approach and, and another look at where we could improve. Um, and again, I just wanna thank Almi for being there at that meeting and clearly, you know, taking note of what was shared and, and, and figuring out next steps, and so I know that there's like, that's a whole nother layer there. Um, but the individuals that are leading on those efforts are actually the, the, the group that Roberto referenced. Um, and specifically, I wanna thank, you know, Jade and Kyle Umemba, who have been leading on those efforts in the community level and also doing a lot of organizing around this specific issue that is clearly one of the most important issues of our times. So, um, I agree that I think, you know, with, with some review and for us to be able to look at those uh, proposals and to figure out some next steps as to what we could do as a school committee to really support and engage, uh, you know, around those topics and whether that's having more community dialogues or if that's just to have, you know, be able to listen more and actually, um, the committee as a whole to be educated about the Black experience, I think, is critical. Um, so I, I would, I do support what Roberto, uh, Mr. Jimenez is sharing, but just wanted to, to share my perspective as to why and certainly wanted to hear other, other feedback from others about it.
Thank you, Ms. Santiago. Ms. Carolina, and then Mr. Wilson?
Hi, I understand the city already has a subcommittee and they've been meeting regular on this subject and maybe if you wanna call someone who's running these meetings, you could be part of the committee uh, as a school committee member and uh, I don't think we need another subcommittee to go, as long as the city has one going and they've been meeting regular, I understand too. So I think it's um, something we should uh, look into, to find out how you can get involved in the city subcommittee on this subject. So I think it's a good idea, so we won't have to duplicate it. Thank you.
Mr. Jimenez, do you have a response to Ms. Carolina's call?
Yeah, I, I just have a quick, uh, you know, I, I, I think it's, I'm, I'm not quite sure if the, if that committee from the city is engaging with the education-specific recommendations because ultimately, any changes in, in, in the recommendations would have to be approved by us and would have to be discussed by us, so I think, you know, it, it would just start the process earlier if we actually, you know, wanted to engage with, with these recommendations. Um, and it would actually make it more specific towards, towards education, that's, that's why I think, you know, even though the city is doing, you know, work with, with some of the other non-education recommendations that I think this group may have proposed, I'm not sure if that's what the faculty are doing. Um, you know, I, I think that as a school committee, it would be good to, to have us engaged specifically with those education-specific recommendations. Um, yeah, just, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jimenez. Mr. Wilson, go ahead.
Okay, there's two things here. Um, one is the resolution that we just heard just now and that we reviewed last week and this week. Um, we had time to review that and adjustments that have been asked and people had, like myself, uh, expressed certain things that would add into the resolution. Thank you for that. The second thing is with um, perspective as communications going on with the city and, and the Youth Alliance here in the city of Chelsea, myself, as well as Dr. Abada, has been involved with the uh, the events, the meetings with the Chelsea Black Community Organization, which I'm a part of as well, as well as uh, with the um, city management. And the meetings are going very well and the recommendations that uh, the young Youth Alliance are requesting, we as uh, the school committee, the school uh, administration has already implemented a lot of those programs before they even asked for them. So, um, I think we're ahead of the game as, as a school department. Um, so I don't really know what else uh, my fellow members want us to do if we're already ahead of the game. We can listen to them, I, I'm at, I'm at the meeting, I can tell you what they've been asking for, they're asking for diversity. They're asking for diversity, schools, they're asking that they hire for diversity administrators, teachers. They're asking for a thing that, again, we as a school department has already been doing. It has been doing since Dr. Abada has been attending schools. So I don't know if we are going to vote on this resolution tonight as it is or do we need more time to add more information as fellow member, to him and to Sabrina, because you know, question, maybe we need to add more information that reflects Chelsea Public Schools instead of a generic resolution that affects everyone else. So that's what my question is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. I wonder, personally, I have not received any communication, but Dr. Abada has been attending these meetings and I'm wondering if perhaps the youth alliance can come present to the school committee. And so perhaps we can get them in and update us on their initiatives and what they're working on and what they need from us so that we can collaborate as one team and one city on a collective front, on a united front. And so I can work on that and reach out to the youth alliance. Are there any other questions related to the resolution tonight? Just going to scroll down.
So just want to make sure I clarify like that. What you just said is basically like what I would like to just add to the resolution to make sure that like, we're like publicly committing to do so. That's it. And we don't have to add it on, you know, to the resolution itself as long as we're actually going to do so, which I appreciate what you just said around, making sure that we give them some space to propose, I mean, to discuss this with the school committee. So, thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Garcia.
Sorry, Ms. Garcia, I just had a
Go ahead, Ms. Jimenez.
That youth alliance, is this different from our Chelsea, our other youth group that we have going on as well? Is this a different group that was formed?
It's a group that had the Black Lives Matter march a couple months ago in our city.
Okay.
It's a complete new group of young people in the community.
Okay, because I know we've worked before with the Chelsea Youth Commission. So I was just wondering, are they involved?
Definitely different group of people.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
Good for clarifying, Mr. Wilson. Alright, team, given that we don't have any more questions or comments, let's
Ms. Garcia?
Yes, Ms. Santiago.
Yes, pardon. So I just wanted to follow up, and I really appreciated what Mr. Wilson said. And I think that's sort of my angle that, you know, I really think that it is our, you know, where possible as individual school committee members for those that have the willingness to do more or less, given our capacity. I think that it is important to show leadership, you know, within the school district and that, you know, we're making the commitment. And again, just echoing what Roberto had shared about, you know, for us to really look at the education-specific recommendations. But I think here, what the key word is engage, right? Like having them come and present, I think is a fabulous and next step for us to really hear directly from them and really put an ear to their experience and what their concerns are. I do know that there's stuff, you know, so Mr. Wilson alluded to the fact that there's stuff that we are head on, but there are things here that we have not discussed, that have not been heard, that have not been touched on that are sort of rumbling throughout different parts of the community that I think it's important for us to receive as a whole. So I do think that, you know, whether that's a subcommittee of the whole and having them come present whichever, whichever way you go, I think it's going to be really meaningful to them and really important for us to be sort of narrow focused around the education specifics aside from the city meetings that are occurring. Thank you, that's all, thank you.
Awesome, thank you, Ms. Santiago. I was, in addition to having inviting, which I will personally reach out to the youth alliance, perhaps Dr. Abada can update us on where they are with her and in their collaboration. So Dr. Abada, I'll turn it to you.
Sure, thank you Chairwoman Garcia and school committee members. They have reached out to me. I have said we're working on a mutual date where they can come in. They wanted to actually officially come in and share their recommendations because they haven't done that. And so what I will do is I'm going to rope in Chairwoman Garcia into that conversation. So we have not, the last email and communication we did have with this group, I said, yes, let's set it up. And we were working on a date, so we'll work on that and then we can go from there. I have talked to the city, with the subcommittee. Cheryl, our city solicitor, has, I've said, I'm more than happy to share a presentation of the work that the school and the school department has done in this particular area. And so she said that here's, she explained the process. And I know Mr. Robinson is on the call and he could probably explain it better than me, but they were going to go through certain sections of the process. And then when they got to the educational section, they would ask me to present to the city subcommittee. So I'm happy, I'm already offered to do that as well. I do, I really like the idea of the city as a whole coming together and all the departments working together as a whole city of Chelsea where we believe that and declare that Black Lives Matter. So I'm excited to do that as well. And I like, as I've been participating in the conversation because I think it's an important conversation. So that's just a little update of where we are.
Awesome, thank you so much, Dr. Abada.
You're welcome.
Members, keep an eye out for that agenda item. And we get to hear a presentation on all of this wonderful stuff that is happening. Mr. Jimenez, I see your hand up, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to just make sure that we had decided on whether it was going to be in the full school committee meeting or whether it was going to be a subcommittee, just so that, you know, folks, like we know. But that sounds like you got it, thank you.
Awesome. Alright, Ms. Sayhas, let's have a roll call, please.
Are you guys going to vote on the agenda item that was on the agenda?
My apologies, let me do the whole language, sorry. Alright, consideration and action to accept the resolution to declare that Black Lives Matter. Explanation, the school committee stands firmly against bigotry, prejudice, discrimination, and inequity in all forms, both institutional and individual, and declares that Black Lives Matter and joins the movement to fight for freedom, liberation, justice, and democracy.
Yeah, I had a question.
Go ahead, Ms. Henriquez.
So I just want a clarification for the resolution. We're going to vote in for the resolution today. And you're going to be reaching out for the youth alliance to come and do a presentation for us, which means that we don't need to wait for them to come prior to vote tonight, right?
So, Dr. Abada is working on that already, right, Dr. Abada? Anywhere, maybe?
I heard that, yes. So I just want to make sure that tonight, we're going to be voting for this. And then we're going to try to incorporate to hear what is going on with the city communications and the youth alliance and also to incorporate the education part.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome. Okay, Ms. Sayhas.
Consideration and action to accept the resolution to declare that Black Lives Matter. Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Henriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yeah.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Nine votes in the affirmative, the motion carries.
Nine in the affirmative, the motion carries. Next up, communications. Do we have any communications to share?
I have not received any communications. We have no communications to share.
Awesome, thank you. Moving right along, are there any announcements?
New announcements, census!
Go ahead.
Votes, early voting! So please, go out there and vote. We have some wonderful people in our community running for so many great offices here in our state. Go out there, support them. Whoever you support, you support. But also make sure we go and do the census, it has been extended. So we have a little bit more time. Chelsea, Chelsea, let's make those census count. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Any other announcements?
Took my thunder. No vote people.
You can repeat what you said, brother.
It's good, you're good, you're good.
Awesome.
Everybody for the input with the school year coming up, for the students and for the teachers and for the parents. We thank you, Dr. Abada, you're a teacher, a job, well presented. And you're ready, and the kids are ready too. The parents, yeah, they want them back in school. We're going to make it happen. So thank you, guys, everyone. Including, we always forget, but we need to show some love to HR department. So thank you, HR, for hiring those wonderful new principals and teachers in our school system. That's it for announcements for Henry.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
You're welcome.
Alrighty, last call for announcements before we adjourn.
Ms. Garcia, this is Marisol.
Go ahead, Ms. Santiago.
So today, there was a communication that was sent on behalf of Mimi, who has been leading a lot of efforts around the pandemic task force, obviously very closely with Dr. Abada since this pandemic started. You know, I know that a lot of folks see that the numbers have jumped and there's neighboring communities that are starting to see numbers jump. There is conversations about, you know, the actual task force meets now once a week as opposed to before where it was a lot more frequent. And I know that Mimi is always looking for feedback and for anybody that has questions or wants to volunteer or support in any way. I haven't been part of the pandemic task force now for probably a good solid two months. Initially was involved with some communications that I'm going to be looking to tap Roseanne Bajavani, who's leading that effort and also circling back with Mimi. Just a shout out to all of you that have been volunteering that, you know, that continuously in a pandemic or not are always doing everything you can for families in the city. And specifically, you know, I don't like to name anybody, I just say everybody. But I know that recently, Ms. Velez, Chairwoman Garcia, and Mr. Wilson were very helpful with the family that was displaced by the fire. You know, who is now also, you know, just another family that's rippling through some effects of this pandemic and COVID. So, you know, the work continues. And I think there's just an interest to come together again and figure out what we've learned and what's working and how we can continue to support our community. So just having received that communication today, just wanted to say like, you know, even though we're starting the new school year with a lot of good hope and strength, that we're still in the midst of something that we have to try to do our best collectively to contain so that all that good work continues to, you know. We honor that good work that's already happened in the city. Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Santiago. Do you mind sharing that when you get a moment with the committee?
Yes, I could forward that, you know, thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Alrighty, team, do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting at eight seventeen?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Wonderful. Meeting adjourned at eight seventeen.
Have a great day.
Have a good night, everyone.